Okay, thank you for coming this evening. This is the second of our forums on whether Vernon is going to vote to withdraw from the high school union or not. There's a lot of history to that. I think this evening what I would like to do is open up on January 11th, excuse me, July 11th, there were several questions asked by the public. I'd like to, if we can, address some of those questions and then open the floor for questions again. And it's our feeling that the more information that we can provide the voters in the town of Vernon, the better informed they are, the better voter they'll be. So, having said that, I would also like to say, I would like to thank a couple of individuals in town who, I don't know if they've actually asked to be anonymous, but I'm not going to give the names. They were kind enough to defer the cost of the school in the creation of the flyer and the distribution of the flyer, so I'd like to thank them. I will be sending out an email, I don't know if I have all of you on the email, asking that if you would donate, I would like to pay some of their monies back, maybe not all of it, they volunteered to do that, but it was not a minor expense and I do appreciate it, but I think it would be nice if we could show our appreciation back to them for their efforts on behalf of the town. So, at the July 11th forum that was held, I don't know if folks saw it on BCTV or not, or some of you were here, some of you weren't, there were questions asked and I just listed those questions, I don't recall when we asked them or what, but just give you the answers that we have at this moment in time. And the answers I've found since we've started this process have changed on a weekly basis because things that happen at the agency of education and the board of education seem to be in flux. And last week I met up in Montpelier on the 28th with approximately 125, 130 people from around the state with concerns about at 46 and very, very similar questions, very similar concerns as to what the town of Vernon has. So it's not just us alone, it's many people in the state asking the same questions. So I will start with, if we choose not to merge, why would other towns make us? Why do they have that power? I don't see any reason why other towns would force us to do anything. The financial analysis indicated that the impacts to the rest of the district would not be tremendous or overbearing. So, you know, given that the financial impact is negligible, I don't see why other towns would not allow us to take our course of action that we desire to take. Why do they have that power? Legislation provides that to dissolve union district, a vote of all member towns is required. So that's in legislation, it's just a formality of law. We will be voting on August 9th as to the direction we're going to go, and the other remaining towns will be voting in November, I believe, yes, in November. So that's why they have the authority to do so, and again, I don't see why they would not honor our request. Are we under any tax stabilization plan with BUHS? We currently pay an assessment to the high school on the number of students attending, and it's based on the budget and other expenses of the high school. And this assessment is applied to our property tax, there's no special tax arrangement or anything like that. So, a tax stabilization plan, I don't think that really exists, and I don't know what the intended question was, but that would be my answer to that. The vote in August, what is it and which towns vote? You just said that before, the vote on August 9th would be for Vernon to withdraw from the BUHS number six, and we would be the only town voting on our withdrawal at that time. The other towns, Brattleboro, Deverton, Guilford, and Putney will be voting in November. If we join the super district, where would the rec department money go, Vernon or the new district? Well, it's not a super district, the new district would actually be the Wyndham Southeast Unified Union School District, or the WSESD. The revenue received from the rec department as well as all other revenues would become revenue to that new entity. So, I think that's the long-term answer there.
Can you speak to that? That makes sense.
Yeah, why would it?
Well, revenue that's raised from the school would go to the super district, to the new district.
Mike, that's the rental fee that we pay. I think when we use the term revenue, the school refers to it as revenue. Townspeople may have heard me mention revenue as far as program revenue. And so rec has our program revenue, but the rental fee is what Mike is talking about, the school views that as revenue to offset their total expenses. So we're talking about the rental fee here, not our specific program revenue. Just to clarify.
So, and under the provisions of Article Six of the Articles of Agreement, there's three sections there. The WSESD would assume all capital debt of the forming district. Second part, assume any and all general operating surpluses, deficits, and balances of the WSU and the districts that joined the new unified district. And they would manage all restricted funds that exist prior to June 30th, 2017, which would be scholarship funds, endowments, capital plans, or like accounts that have specified conditions of use, and they would be used in accordance with those provisions.
Okay, if I speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah. So I'm Ron Salee Superintendent of Wyndham Southeast. So I think that clause is really key, that scholarship funds, endowments, capital funds, or like accounts would be held by the school district prior to 2017. They would be maintained in those school districts. That's the intent of that language. So any sort of capital fund that Vernon has is maintained for the Vernon School. Any rec department funding is maintained for the Vernon School. And those are special arrangements for each district.
So, anyway, so Ron is correct in that. The other thing, and this came up on the state level, was, you know, that's how things exist now, could that change? I imagine it could by votes or by legislation. So, you know, some of these questions are really hypotheticals as to what could or what couldn't happen, but at the current situation, the answer to that question is that money would be part of the new district, but it would be kind of designated funds. How does it impact the teachers' union? And I guess there was a meeting earlier with the teachers and the superintendent, and they asked very similar questions to that. Article Three of the Articles of Agreement kind of addressed that. Recognition and collective bargaining would maintain the current contractual agreements, and they would recognize representatives of the bargaining units. As for how it would impact the Vernon staff, our intention is that we would maintain the same conditions under the same statutes and under the same articles of the Articles of Agreement. The issue here, again, as I said, things are in flux. We don't know what the agency is going to do, what the state board of education is going to do. Our hope is that we would be able to contract for our services. All the services we receive now, and our staff, and all the contractual agreements, we would continue to be able to operate under those conditions. But that's going to be something that we're not going to be able to determine, that will be determined by the agency or by the board. I think in our conversations with our partners in the SU, they would like the relationship also to continue. So I think what may occur would be if we're voted out and the other districts vote us out, we would then seek approval from the agency of education to have a contractual agreement with the new existing unified district. And if both sides agree, I don't see why, what would be the motivation, excuse me, to not allow that to happen? If that were not allowed to happen, we would have to start looking at some alternatives, which would be like districts. So we would be looking at towns within our region that would be operating under the same, you know, K8, K6 with school choice, all sorts of things. And we'd be looking to maybe get an arrangement with them and set up a different, a different district. But our first preference would be to get that contractual agreement with the new unified district and be able to keep business as close to as it is now. Yes, sir.
What about professional development in that sense?
That would all be under the same condition. That would be, if it's approved by the agency and the state board of education, then we'd be allowed to contract those services. We would try to keep things as consistent as we could possibly get. Yes?
Do you know any other schools in our surrounding district that are thinking of not merging with whatever group they would go to?
Currently, there are conversations, I had the list, and I would be Jamaica, Demerstyn, excuse me, Dover, Jamaica, Dover, Marlborough, Reedsboro, Jacksonville, and Londonderry, I think, they're all having conversations. We have not been privy to those conversations, we've been invited. I told the chair of the other boards that pending our vote, I think it would be premature for us to turn any conversation with them, but certainly if we vote to withdraw, I would hope that we could have a conversation with them and let them know, be very frank, that if we're allowed to stay as we are now with the super district, that's going to be our preference. But certainly keep us informed of what they're doing and the direction we're heading.
Question?
Yes.
I'm concerned about if we do vote to withdraw and we aren't going to be aligned with the district that we're currently in. We are just embarking on a lot of new initiatives curriculum-wise, at least two, three that I'm aware of, that I'm currently using. And if we are aligned with another, say Dover or somewhere else that isn't in our same curriculum, I'm concerned about where that leaves us and the best kind of continuum for our students who are choosing to go to the Brattleboro High School, where all the other kids have those curriculums. So, maybe just what would we do in that case where our curriculum is not going to be matching the school that we might be aligned with?
Well, as I said, we hope that we could keep the arrangements that we do have, but if we were to change and our curriculum changed, our students that would go to BUHS would be like a Dover student going to BUHS presently. They don't have those curriculums. That would not be our particular preference, but again, that's something that is going to be beyond our control. What we're looking to do is protect the town of Vernon and the students of Vernon as much as we can, and doing that to protect our integrity of our educational process. And again, our first preference would be to keep things pretty much as they are as much as we can. Yes, sir.
Mike, how long do we have, or what's the door that we could still get to merge? How many, is it a year? And then we have to make a decision if we withdraw, how much time do we have that if we wanted to get back to this merge that we could? Is it a year? Is it two years? Is it three years? Is it no years? Once we, if we choose we're not going to merge, then we're, that's it?
No, actually, I'm not sure that there's a date cert that it would end, but certainly one of the things that I've said numerous times is that, you know, and again, this is some of the shared concerns that were in Montpelier last week, was that there's no real off-ramp to doing this. If you merge, it could be difficult to get out, if you could get out at all, because there's some, right now, there's some lack of confidence with the agency of education or the board as to how they're going to rule on things. So some people are holding that there may not be an off-ramp, and some people think there is. But regardless, there is not a structure or restriction to you joining. So if we were to take this approach and say, okay, we're going to be out of the union and we're going to go out on our own, if in fact we do that and we find that economically or educationally it's not something that we want to do or continue to do, then the town could vote to petition to be allowed back into the district. And then, you know, they would have to vote to let us in, but certainly, you know, that avenue is there, it's not, if you vote out, you're out. I mean, we still have that approach that you could take.
And I have one other question that was referring to the board, and it listed Brattleboro three, Demerstyn, Guilford, and Putney would have one, there were three at large. What makes up the Brattleboro? Is that like one for the elementary, the high school, middle school, and the tech center? What makes the Brattleboro have three people?
It's population.
Oh, okay.
It's based on population. And voting on that, again, there are other areas doing the same thing. There is concern as to how the votes trigger out. One of the things that people are not comfortable with is that, you know, Brattleboro would elect their three representatives, and there's three at-large representatives. People feel those three would probably come from Brattleboro, they have most of the votes, they would elect those people. The one thing that gives people pause is that Vernon's representative, or Demerstyn, or Putney, or Guilford's representative would be voted by all of them. All of the members are at-large, so it's not just you voting for your representative, it's going to be all the other districts. So there have been a lot of, a lot of concern expressed about that, some pretty negative comments, which I did not share with people. I think, you know, there were kind of an accusatory tone that I don't think we need, but certainly there was concern that people from other districts would be voting for your representative.
And the only other thing I have was, we talked about transparency about the budgets. And for me, I know the booklet comes out, we get it. We are lucky if we even see, we don't, I don't ever remember getting it a week before a meeting. I remember walking in and getting, oh, here's the booklet, and then we're going to vote. And you really don't have time to really look through it, that if you wanted to ask an intelligent question, is that going to change? Because to walk in as a voter and say, here's this huge budget if we do merge, and trust me, I don't think that's trans, I was lost here. Transparency is, I'm the old school, you should have put something up there and wrote it down, because people don't even know what the BL whatever is, okay? But to be able to at least look at it and then, you know, a lot of the questions we might have that we were, thought that was really something that bothered us was really nothing if somebody explained it or had the time, because you're going to be talking about big books no matter what.
Right.
So is that ever going to change?
Well, I can only speak to what we do here, and when we have our budget process, we have at least two forums, and most of the time three, where we present our budgets to the town. I believe the other towns do the same thing, that they would have meetings where they present budgets to the town. Ours, we feel, is even more critical because we no longer have the town meeting vote where it's voted from the floor, it's voted by Australian ballot. So it's very important to us that people attend those forums. Unfortunately, they're very sparsely attended, and the information doesn't always get out, but that's, that's our big way of distributing that information, is to have people come to those forums. I, again, I'm not sure how it would go with the new district, but certainly I think there would be an effort made to have transparency.
Well, if you're asking about the BUHS six budget? We start that budget process in November. Those meetings are open, the finance committee, every other Monday night it seems. We welcome people to come. Those budgets are separated by the district-wide budget, they're then separated by the career center, Wyndham Regional Career Center, the BUHS budget, and the BAM's budget. So it's all there, and then those booklets that we send out are, you know, six weeks ahead of time. So, again, draft budgets are being generated in November for second week in February vote. So I don't see that changing.
Where do we find that those are, where do we find that it is stated so that we would know? Because look at how many things we have here. It's at 6 o'clock, not everybody can get to it, and I, I'm getting up there in age, I listen to you, but there's things that I'd like to have, that I have something in hand, that I can write on it, and I can see, and go back to the figures, and...
So the draft budget is posted on our website in December.
Okay, all right.
And print that off. It's available. And those booklets, again, they go out at least six weeks ahead of the budget vote.
They don't get mailed to the home staff? They usually sit at the town clerk's office.
The town clerk's office. And this, this...
I've gone in here in the town clerk's office, and this year we did not get one.
I don't know why, but that's unusual.
I went to your office, and I picked some up and brought them back.
Yeah, I mean, it's unusual that they wouldn't deliver.
Yeah, I would like to know the rationale. If, if we leave the district, we lose that one vote. And yet you want to maintain, you want to essentially maintain the system as it is, but go essentially hat in hand back to the district we are no longer there, but without even having a vote in it. You don't want to change the system, but you want to give up any input into it. I agree that probably, you know, three from Brattleboro, three at-large and stuff, may be a bit unequal in the surface, but having no vote and still wanting the system to work for us seems to me really sort of risky. We're just at work, we're hoping, and we're voting in August when everybody else is voting in November. What's the rationale, what's the rationale for giving up the vote? And what's the rationale for doing it so early, when there's still so much, as you said, influx?
For us doing it early is to assist the other towns. They, they can't vote on a merger or not to merge if they don't know what we're doing. So ours is earlier for that reason. The other, giving up a rep on the board, would be that we would be contracting services from that board, and that's, I think that's what the people are voting on. What value is it to keep school choice, keep ownership of our building, keep things the way they are as much as we can? Is it worth contracting and not having a representative? Now, if, if the agency or the board says we cannot contract for those services, and we do go to another district and we reform the district, we would have a vote on that district. Here, we would be flat out purchasing services.
The follow-up, as you said, control. I did look at the Act, obviously not as strongly as you. I find no confiscatory issue within the Act that says we lose our building. Where, where does that, that information come from that shows up in this flyer?
It's actually in the Articles of Agreement. Do you have, do you have a comment? We're getting more comments.
I mean, actually, good.
What happens is if...
Article seven, maybe?
Yes, seven.
What page is that?
Seven, page six.
Okay. What happens is if, if we merge, once the new district becomes operational, all the other districts cease to exist. So there would be no longer a Vernon Elementary School District, it would no longer be in existence. So, under Article Seven, real estate property and school operations transfer a property to the unified district. No later than June 30th, 2017, the forming districts that vote to join a unified district will convey to the unified district with a sum of $1, and subject to all encumbrances of record and all of their school-related real and personal property, including all land, buildings, and contents. They own everything that we have for a dollar. And that's, that's where it exists. And I know there's townspeople here that are concerned about that aspect of it. I mean, you know, and again, that goes throughout the state. People are very concerned about that throughout the state. And further, if, if at some point the new unified district decided to close your school, you could purchase your school back from them for a dollar. I don't know why you want your school back if it was closed, but there it is. Yeah, so that, that is something that's troubling to a lot of people throughout the state, that, you know, after we've put a lot of money into the building, we've kept our building up. I think it's one of the better buildings in the state. When you look at schools, it's well-maintained, and we walk up and down the halls, tell me what your park was done in the 50s, what your park was done in the 80s, and where that separation is. Our crew here does an extraordinary job. They're hard-working folks, they're very proud of the building. Simple things, even if you go in the gym and look at our floor. That gym floor should have been replaced several years ago, but because of the high level and quality of maintenance that we do here, and that the people in Vernon have paid for here and support the school, those are all things that we would want to have the decision-making on, and continue to have that decision-making power. So again, that's another reason why we're looking to kind of maintain what we have in some respect. Larry?
My youngest boy, I sent him out to Vernon School, and the town pays state average for his tuition. If we join this, will other parents be able to send their some to some other school and have the tuition paid?
The whole trigger to, are looking at getting out of the union, came back last September, last August, sometime around here. I was having conversations with Representative Olson from Londonderry, and one of the questions we had was, how does this truly impact towns that have choice? Article four, or section four of Act 46 says you shall not lose school choice unless you vote to do so. So we said, well, what exactly does that mean? That means if you join a merged district, you're voting to give up your school choice, because they've held, or it hasn't been determined in court, but the attorney that crafted the law and is now working for the agency of education laid the question out that she believes that two districts, two schools cannot be in the same district, and one school will be paying tuition and the other not. It's an equity issue, and it would be subject to a constitutional challenge. And if you lost a constitutional challenge, you would lose school choice. That being, I referred to in Montpelier, there were a large number of people from Elmore there. They're very upset because when they voted, they didn't realize they were voting themselves out of school choice, and they no longer have school choice. When they voted, it was decided they would not have school choice. So, the short answer, Larry, your question is, if we got in this new unified district, we would not have school choice.
We have to pay tuition for students to go to Brattleboro or to Pioneer Valley. What, do we have any contractual agreement that that tuition can't just escalate, or all of a sudden Brattleboro says we don't have room for your students, or Pioneer Valley says we don't have room? What kind of guarantee we have that we're not going to find tuition escalating out of...
Well, from what I think, currently we pay an assessment to the high school, and because we're part owners of the building, we belong to the union district, we pay more than what tuition is, because there are things that you cannot charge in tuition that would come with ownership of the building. And as far as wild escalating tuition, a school is not just allowed to charge you whatever they desire to charge. They have to stay within certain guidelines which the agency and the board set, so they couldn't suddenly say, oh, by the way, Vernon is $20,000 so you come here. Students that go to BUHS from Dover pay a fixed tuition, and it would be the same tuition that we would pay going, going there. You have to look at the history of our relationship with Brattleboro. Historically, 75 to 80 percent of our students have gone to Brattleboro. We see no reason why that would change. So, the, you know, the idea that suddenly they would try and raise your tuition out of sight or something like that, which is, it really doesn't exist. I don't think, I don't think we'd have to be concerned with that. That they're not going to do something that would not be in compliance with what the rules and regulations are. Yes?
So what would the difference be for us as taxpayers for students to go to the high school if we had to tuition them? And maybe Frank could answer that, as well as what would the difference or the cost distribution be for high-needs, intensive students that are leaving our school, that go to the high school, if we chose to leave the union? if we chose to leave the union? Could you just point out what the differences might be?
Do you want me to speak then?
Sure.
So, yeah, so as Mike has referred to, there's, there's two models in the state now. One is you're a member of the union high school and there's actually a, just a cost per student calculation that goes to the town office that sets a tax rate in Vernon and all other member towns. And then the other option is this, you're not a member and you have to cut the check for, for a tuition amount. So your question is, well, what's the, what's the impact in, on the tax rate? So on the surface, it's, it's not substantially different whether, if you froze the system today and took the current tax rate under the current rules and compared it to what Mike described as a $14,000 tuition payment from Vernon to Brattleboro Union. The significant difference, though, going forward is the nature of how, what kind of position you're in to deal with changes in student enrollment. As a member of a union high school, any, any town that's a member of a union system, you're, you're, you're part of a union, so you, if you have a large increase in costs associated with the special needs student population that you had asked about, then the union shares that cost. If you're a separate district like Dover and you have a significant increase in enrollment for that, that group, the, again, as Mike was referring to, tuition is prescribed in law. And there's a regular ed rate, $14,750. And then if you're a tuition-based town, then you're going to get a separate bill for those additional services. There is no share. So I can't tell you what that looks like a year, two, or three. I can just say that you, you know, as an individual smaller school, the likelihood of you having more volatility in your tax rate is, is higher because of, because of the smaller base that you're...
And that's what, earlier when I mentioned that if, if it became economically not feasible to continue on your own, then you would look to do something different. And that's why we would want to keep that door open. Because we're not sure of what things are going to look like a year or two down the road. I mean, our, our special aid costs could go down or they could go up either way. But certainly keeping the door open to going back into a union and sharing costs or if it's not the WSCSD, or it would be the WSESD, not going into that, but joining another one for sharing of those costs. That would be something that the board would have to always consider doing. I mean, every year we do our budget, we try to come up with the most reasonable budget and what is the most fair to our students and taxpayers. And we would continue to do that. And that would be one of the things to look at is what are, what is it costing us to be on our own? And, and is it still advisable to do that?
What about the cost for transportation and for heating oil for the school? Would you be on your, be on your own, would you be on our own for those?
Again, that would depend if we were contracting services. You would want to be part of that same contract. So, a lot, a lot of those types of questions, we will not have an answer to until this is done. And if we're out of the high school union, to petition the agency and the Board of Ed to allow us to do what we've laid out as our plan.
So they could say, yes, you could contract with the district, or they could say, no, you can't.
Right.
So cost-wise?
At that, at that point, then we would have to look at...
We have no idea.
What is alternative, what, what would the alternatives be? That gentleman over there, he's had his hand up for a while.
If we're in our own district, would we have to hire a superintendent or other positions?
Again, that would be a contractual service, contracting for services. That would be superintendent, special aid, all the things that we receive now. But we would be paying for them on a fee-for-service kind of basis. Yes, sir?
Have the other districts voted to join this larger union yet?
No, they haven't. That's the vote in November. And right now, one of the things that, when we first pulled out of all of this, it did create kind of a logjam for everybody else because they don't know what to do or what they can do or where they're going until Vernon decides what we're doing. So when we pulled out, their initial vote was supposed to be back in, when was that? June? Mayor June?
Yeah, in June.
In June. Well, when we withdrew from the process, that stopped that. And it's not our intention to keep other towns from doing what they desire to do. Our only intention is to do what's in the best interest of Vernon. And the board has taken into consideration, this is the course of action we're recommending and this is the direction we want to go in. Ultimately, it's up to the folks of the town in Vernon. So if the town in Vernon says, "Well, no, we're perfectly content to give it all up and stay where we are," then, then that's it. But the board, looking out, as we always have for the town and for the kids, and what we, what we see as local control, our own board, our own building, all of that, that's why we're taking this direction.
So then in actuality, there isn't even a larger combined district at this point? So even though we're voting to succeed, there's no even district to, larger district yet, as of yet?
Well...
Yes. We're not voting to succeed, we're voting not to join. Big difference, sissies, whatever. It's, it's, we're voting not to join. If we join, we can't get out. If we don't join, we can join later. As far as the tuition cost goes, it's cheaper for us to send kids elsewhere because we're not charged as much as we are, being part of WSESD right now, we are charged more. So it actually saves us. And we've always said that, every budget meeting, we save money when kids go to Pioneer. On the other end, as far as contracting, I can't see where, where the new unified board would not, would say, "Oh, we don't want Vernon in there because we're offering them $2 million." Why wouldn't somebody want $2 million if it's not going to cost them any more money to do what they're already doing? But that's part of what we're frustrated about is we already belong to a district that is cutting costs. There's no need for us to get into a unified board that's going to take away our choice. That's where this comes down, to take away our choice, take away our school board, take away our building. We don't need to go that way, in my opinion, as a board member here. We can always join them. But if we join them now, we don't have any choices at all. We're just done.
And on the issue of leaving, we are asking people to vote. If you got the flyer or you saw the ballot question, vote to withdraw from the supervisor, from the BUHS District Number Six. And the reason for that, as I explained earlier, is the school choice issue. If we don't withdraw from BUHS Number Six, BUHS Number Six, we will lose our choice. And that's, that was the first trigger. And then when we saw things happening like no, no longer have a school board, no longer have ownership of your building, you know, the conditions that, that occur, we feel are not in the best interest of Vernon at this point in time. Yes, ma'am?
You talked a lot about losing choice as well as the flux going on up in Montpelier. Are there any legislative opportunities available that could change choice? So can't you go back to Montpelier and say, "We demand choice"?
Actually, the meeting I was at last Thursday, 28th, as I said, there was 125, 130 people there. And there was also a good number of legislators there. And we were having discussions about what bills we were going to be filing. One of the bills that I'm signing on to will be that right now, to be a side-by-side district, you need two or more towns to be a side-by-side. A side-by-side means you're your own district, you have your own board, you have your own stuff, the stuff that we want to continue right now. But you can belong to or associate with a new unified board. Right now, we can't do that because there's no one else around us that wants to do that. If Guilford were to say, "We want to have K6, school choice, and we want to be a side-by-side with Vernon to this new entity," we could do that. So the bill that I'm going to propose would allow one individual town to do that. There is conversations about the equity situation where two districts, two towns can't be in the same district, one have tuition, one not. One of the bills that is being looked at and right now is discussion stage would be that if you're a town within a unified district and your town decides to vote for school choice, then you would be allowed to have school choice. And the language would be written so that the constitutional issue would no longer exist. There are at least, well, last session, there were, there were at least a dozen changes to Act 46 proposed. Unfortunately, the administration and the chair of that committee had no desire to change Act 46 in any way, shape, or form. So none of those bills came off the wall. I would assume that those and others are going to be resubmitted. Some of, some of the stuff that may be submitted is now that we're in, how do we get out? Because when we got in, we didn't know what we're getting into. And that is a big consideration. And it has to do with the formation of the study committees. Many towns, many districts were surprised to find out that once you joined a study committee, you no longer had no, any authority whatsoever over the study committee. They're an autonomous group and your board had no, no legal authority. So we basically ceded our authority to another group. That may actually be a legal case. There's talk about some schools may join a class action suit because we're not allowed to set up another municipality. And essentially, that's, that's the feeling of what, what we did by doing these study groups. So there's conversations there. So to answer your question in the short, yes, there are going to be many, many proposals. And again, that is another reason that we said, let's slow down, take our time. Because this is going to change dramatically in the next legislative session. If for no other reason, something quite unusual is going to happen in Vermont this next election. New governor, new lieutenant governor, new Speaker of the House, new Senate pro tem, new Attorney General. Nobody can remember when that, they all changed at the same time. Maybe Barb, because she's a great historian, but most people don't. Most people don't remember the last time that happened. And along with those changes, you're going to see an educational change in leadership. It's anticipated that the secretary will change. It's anticipated that the Board of Education will change, the State Board of Education. So a lot of the stuff that they're wondering, we're wondering about now can change dramatically depending on who gets elected. I know we've had, at the meeting up there, one of the gubernatorial candidates came in. His preference would be to repeal Act 46. And these people that are having that conversation, that's kind of, kind of a big hurdle. I don't, I don't see that it's going to be repealed. But certainly there will be more than minor tweaks to it if we can advance an agenda that we'd like to see happen. Members that were at the meeting last week from the Ed Committee were talking that they recognized that when Act 46 was done, it was kind of those one-size-fits-all things. And for some communities, St. Johnsbury, kind of an easy thing because they're already doing that. Rutland had already done some of it. So it was kind of easier for some districts than other. Then you have places like, we have here with Choice and you have Franklin that has their conditions and you have Venusburg with their special conditions. There are a lot of unique things to small towns in Vermont. And those weren't addressed. And one-size-fitting-all doesn't, doesn't work. I mean, I am not fitting into Barb's shirt. It just ain't happening. It's not going to work. One-size-fits-all does not work. And I think there's going to be conversation about how we adjust this so individual towns and individual conditions can be kept. Last week, the Board of Ed made an indication that they would be looking at how to recognize the ability for towns to have school choice. That conversation is starting to come out a little more. And I think it's because of the many towns like Vernon and so many others throughout the state that have said, "This isn't what we want. This isn't, this isn't how we want our town to be operated." So there will be changes. And I, there was somewhere back there, is it?
I'm confused about why we have to vote in August so that these other people that are voting in November know what we're doing. I'm confused by that.
Okay. If, if we were not trying to, if we were saying we're going to be in the merger, then we could have voted back in June. Vernon decided, "We want to go a slower approach, take our time, look at all our options and see what conditions exist." So we don't want to move forward. So we kind of withdrew from the process. In doing that, one of the unanticipated consequences was that all the other people got stuck. They can't move until Vernon moves. Well, they would like to proceed forward, at least, you know, to have a vote. I'm not sure how the other towns are going to vote. I, you know, I hear different opinions from different towns. One day you think they're going to pass it, the next day you don't think they're going to merge. But the upshot is they can't vote unless they know what we're doing.
But why is that?
Because currently we...
Because the articles, in the Articles of Agreement, they have to define...
It's based on statute.
Right. The statute requires that. But also, in the Articles of Agreement, we're not in those Articles of Agreement. So they, if we fail to remove ourselves, then we would be in the Articles of Agreement. We'd be going along with the process. Not having that, again, they want to advance those Articles of Agreement. We don't want to be part of it. So we have to vote whether we are or not next week in August.
Before they know.
So they know, so they can vote in November.
So this, so what it means is that in November, they're voting on whether they're going to go into the district? Is that correct?
Whether they're going to be the new unified district. The WSESD and all the forming districts would no longer exist. You would have a new unified district. And that's what they would be voting on in November.
They'd also be voting on whether to let us out.
Right. We still need them to vote to let us out. But again, we've had conversations and there's really no, there's no real reason for them not to let us out at this point in time. Yes?
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for passing this out. I hear a lot of people whispering when you talked about Article seven. And I'm wondering, the real estate property and school operations? I'm wondering if maybe Ron or Lyle or Frank could clarify that? Because I'm still not clear on that $1 for all of our property piece. I know it sounds clear, but I'm not clear on it.
You want me to comment?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so there's, there's a longstanding statute that recognizes that if a new entity forms, it obviously has to have the assets and the ability to manage the assets of the new institution. So, yes, okay. Maybe I should use this?
No, let's just go to the...
So, yeah, so it's under the premise that the new union has, has formed a larger community. And they, and just, all the principles are the same, the premise in terms of property ownership and then respecting the local preferences for school building use, you know, welcoming, public use and so on, is, is also in, in the articles. But the reference to the dollar, it is in statute. It's, it goes back to the 70s when many union schools formed in Vermont. And it's, it's a, it's a way to simplify, to simplify the, you know, the legal aspect of a deed and, you know, ownership of property. Because obviously, school boards delegate the safety of the students to the, the local administration. And that means you have to have ownership of, of the facility in which the students are, are in. But on the reverse, I think Mike did mention this, on the reverse, if, if the union no longer is going to utilize an asset as a school facility, then it would go back to the, the town from which it came. So it's a, it's a pretty simple, it's a way to take a very... So it's a, it's a pretty simple, it's a way to take a very complex issue around property boundaries and deeds and, you know, liability for assets. It's a, it's a very simple way that the legislature created forty, fifty years ago to say, if you want to form a new, larger community, then we're going to, we're going to make the legal aspect of it a straight path, a simple path.
Now, one of the things that Frank just alluded to was that the unified district, they've developed some policies and procedures to encourage local input. Because certainly, if you think about the Vernon Elementary School and what a part of this, of our community, it's an integral part of our community. And there's been celebrations here and there's been celebrations of life, celebration of death here. There's been a lot of things that have happened here. When Eric Pratt was killed a few years ago, we had a memorial service here at the school. We've done that on a number of occasions. We've had weddings here. We've had all kinds of things here. Because it's our public building, it is our building and that's the desire of our town. And that's what we want to do. If you look at Article 15, which is on page nine, at the last meeting, superintendent said that, you know, this is one of the things that is, is one of the pros to, to this new unified district. It would be the formation of school-based leadership councils. And I think that sounds good on the surface and I'm speaking now for myself, I have not discussed this with the my own board members, but this is my view of it. School-based leadership councils shall be established and each school provide local input on specific programs and activities. Councils will be made up of the principals, staff, and community members. The councils will have a chair, vice chair, committee, and committee representatives. The leadership councils shall include one staff member appointed by the board, which is the, by the chair, board chair. That would be the chair of the unified district. Three community members nominated at town meeting and appointed by the district board. That would begin with unified board. And also the principal may appoint a student. Nowhere in there are we voting for our, our school-based leadership council. We aren't voting for that. It's going to be decided by the new unified district. And my own, my own opinion is that these local councils will be appointed by the unified district. And, and they have no real authority or power to protect a local school or to influence policy, no real meat. I believe the best local council is in this room right now. It's the townspeople working with their elected school board to provide the best educational opportunities for our kids. That to me is the best school-based leadership council. It's exactly what we have in Vernon now. And that's why I've taken a position I've had that for as long as we can, Vernon should run its own school.
Question I had is for Walter because he's our representative to the high school. Right?
Mike, Mike Myers.
Oh, well, he was. But perhaps you were at one time, Walter, or you're at Act 46.
Michael was.
He's on the Act 46.
What happens when, like Vernon goes to these meetings now? Is our opinion respected by the other towns or are, is our opinion trampled on?
I'm glad you asked, Walter.
Well, I mean, the, the board is made of representatives of each town. So there are a lot of people on the board. I think in general, the members of the Act 46 study committee have worked very hard to take into account Vernon's need to or want to maintain school choice. And I think very early on, all of the work of the board was leading to our being able to keep school choice even as we moved forward with merging with the other districts. Once it became clear that that wasn't possible, I think they continued to have language in the articles that made the merger attractive to us. There was, you may recall in an earlier version of the articles, a grandfathering clause for individuals who are currently have the option of school choice to continue with that. I mean, but the issue was at the end of the day, sooner or later, school choice would go away. I mean, at best, the articles could give us a grandfathering period for folks to have the option to choose schools other than VUHS. I mean, I'm sure they're extremely frustrated. As Mike has stated, Vernon has slowed down the process considerably. I think they're waiting for our vote on August 9th to, so then they'll know how to proceed moving forward. You know, have I heard comments from individuals at the board, you know? I think their frustration coming out absolutely. But I think all along, they have tried hard to make sure Vernon's opinions were taken into consideration. It just became very difficult when there was no way for the committee or the articles to accommodate our desire to have school choice moving forward.
I, I do think there's, if you talk to people that have attended the meetings, it makes there is some frustration level as to how decisions are made and where things go. But Walter is right. When we talked about our desire to have school choice, there, there was an attempt made to try and, try and work with us on that. But certainly there are people with, that feel their voices weren't heard or that their opinions weren't shared. I think some of it was how the, how the meetings were run themselves. I think the public commentary, I didn't see a lot of the meetings, I saw them on TV, but I think the allowance for public comment was very, very limited and stifled. And I think that's a lot of the angst that people have. And I think some question is to the entire process. Yes, sir?
I'm wondering if someone can address the issue of benefits, of healthcare benefits, retirement benefits, things that have been negotiated as a district. When you negotiate as a district, I'm assuming you get a better deal. You've got a lot of people. Is Vernon going to need to negotiate healthcare for Vernon's staff individually as a town? Will taxpayers pick up that increase, I'm assuming? Maybe incorrectly? Is it just, can, we just talk about how that will happen? You've said that you want everything to stay the same. By staying the same, you know, in a town, we're a town now who's really looking hard at our budget, trying to bring it under control with VY leaving. How does that impact us tax-wise?
Well, I, I think again, that goes back to what I said earlier about what the board, the state board of ed is going to do and what the agency does. If they allow us to contract with the new, the new unified district, then those issues would be resolved as they are today.
But you say if.
Right. And, but, so there's, there's no, I cannot give you a yes or no answer. The best answer is that our intention, and at this point in time, the intention as represented by the superintendent and others from the unified district are that we would have that shared contractual arrangement. That would be our intention, that's what we would hope to agree on. There is a third party that comes into play, or a fourth party, the state comes into play on it. And that's the wild card. We don't know what they would do. I think at our earlier meeting, Superintendent Staley said, if we as an entity and the new unified district went to the agency and said, we are both willing partners in this arrangement, what, why wouldn't they allow it to happen? So, you know, again, it's, it's, it's the impossible question to answer. But what I will say is what our desire is, is that we would move forward, be able to have that contractual arrangement. And we would maintain our school choice, maintain our board, maintain our building, but be contracting for those services. Yes, sir?
Kind of confused on the whole what exactly how we're voting, the way it's worded. It sounds like we're trying to withdraw from something that doesn't exist as of yet.
No, no, no. What we're, what we want to do is if you look at the article, you have? Yes, please. Okay. If you look at the very top of the flyer, if you all have that, there will be two questions. In favor of withdrawing from Brattleboro Union High School District Number Six, that is what currently exists today. You would vote, if you're in favor of withdrawing, you would vote there. If you're opposed to withdrawing, you'd vote on the second box. That entity, the VUHS Number Six, exists today. It's existed for fifty, sixty years. It's been there for a long time. That's the historical point. When they wanted to create that district, the VUHS Number Six district, they asked Vernon to commit to the district. And Vernon would agree to do that if we maintained school choice. Because for a number of folks here, the high school for the Vernon students was Mount Herman. That was one of our high schools. Kids went to Mount Herman. So our forefathers didn't want to lose that. And they said, we're going to maintain school choice so that our townspeople have that option. In the charter, when VUHS Number Six was created, in the charter, we have school choice. We're the only town within that union district that has school choice because it's in the charter. Twice in legislation, it's been held that Vernon has school choice on two separate occasions. That's what gives us our unique situation. We are the only town in the entire state that belongs to a union high school and to Asian students. So that created a very unusual situation. Therein came the question of, can we still do that? And that's when the constitutional issue came up. So the attorney said, the easiest way, it's not very easy, but the easiest way to do it and maintain our school choice would be for us to withdraw from the high school union. That's what that question's about. Do we withdraw from the high school union? That entity exists and that's what we're going to do. If in November, the other folks decide they're going to merge and allow us to withdraw, we will be out of that, that entity. But also, what exists today will not be existing. And I think that's where the confusion's coming in. Once unified district comes into existence, all the other districts that are here, the forming districts, whether it's Putney Elementary or Dummerston School or Guilford, they're all no longer going to exist. They will all be in this new unified district. So I, I think that's where some of the confusion comes in. Because suddenly, if Vernon were to be merging, Vernon School District would no longer exist. No board, no school, we're done. And there would be the creation of the new entity. But this question is simply, do we withdraw from the high school union? Yes?
I think Gina was before me.
Oh, okay.
I just want to go back on, you know, what Coe was saying about the different services and contracting. I, I think it's really hard for us to vote without knowing if we're going to be able to contract with the unified district. I mean, there's so many unknown costs that we could potentially incur. And I think that's, how do we, I mean, how do you vote without knowing what's, what, it's such an unknown?
Well, that's.
And I get that's why we're here, but I think there's not really any answers as to what those costs would be.
Well, that's why I said, this is what our intention is. And again, the backup to that is if it is not allowed, there's nothing that prohibit us from then joining. So if we, if, if we say we don't want to withdraw, what we're saying is, okay, we're willing, we're going to go into the merger and we're going to give up choice, the building, the board, all those sorts of things. We're going to give all that up. If we vote withdraw to maintain those things and we don't, we are not allowed to contract the way we want it, or we can't join with another district that would make it financially feasible and good for our students and staff, then we look to join the group. But this gives us an opportunity to make that decision at a later date. If we make the decision on the ninth, not to, not to leave, then we're done.
Where do, where do we have the right to join if we so choose?
There's no prohibition legislation. And I've asked it numerous times and there is no, no one would not allow you to.
Including the new district.
I, I, I don't know why they wouldn't allow you to.
But.
But I suppose they could if they didn't want to, but I don't know why.
This is the legal faith that we're going on.
Right.
Is that if all else fails, we can go with our tail between our legs and say, please let us go back.
I, I wouldn't say, Kevin, I think we're trying to do absolutely what we feel is in the best interest of our town and our students at this point in time. If that proves not to be the case, I don't think it's tailwind. You're, you're going to make a budgetary or a staff decision as to what's in the best interest, again, of the town. At this current time, the board feels that it's in the best interest of the town and the students to take this course of action because it's more prudent. It gives us more time to think about what we're doing and to study the situation. Now, we also don't know if in November, one of those towns, they're all necessary towns. So if one of those towns says, we don't want to merge, the whole deal's off anyway. But we have to do something to allow them to have their vote. And I think what we're trying to do is just keep some safeguards for us that we can vote to withdraw. And if they vote to allow us to, and then the agency says, no, you can't, you can't do that, then we can always go back into the district. But if we don't avail ourselves of that opportunity on the ninth, we're in the new unified district. It's all there is to it. There's no other option. We're in. And school choice is out. If you're worried about ownership of the building, it's out. If you're worried about electing your own local officials, that's gone. The gentleman in the back had his hand up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions about the language and the wording that maybe Ron could answer. One is on the lack of being able to pull out once we're in. I didn't find that quite in the wording. The other was on what it means to not exist as a Vernon School District and having the building and the resources that we have. And the third is on the financial benefits to joining the new WSUSD. As a small school with fluctuating students and student needs, special education, ESL, all of those things, I'm wondering what the benefits would be to joining a district where we could have shared resources? Those were the three that I could remember right now.
Well, I, I think again, that goes to the question of are we allowed to do what we are hoping and planning to do as we discussed with the present supervisor union? As far as cost savings and things like that, the anticipated savings in the first year is like a hundred thousand dollars. And that would be out of a $52 million budget. Everybody you're looking at saving a hundred thousand dollars. Personally, I feel that what we do presently in supervisor union, we can continue to do without a merger. If I were, if I, not on anybody else's board, but if I were advising all the other towns, I would say, let us not merge. Let us try and keep the integrity of our supervisor union. We have shared services. We have shared contracts. We have shared purchasing. We have fuel agreements. We have done and matched and met all of the goals of Act 46. There are other towns in the state or other districts in the state that feel the same way and they're going to vote not to merge. That's my view of this. I think the cooperation and the effectiveness of our supervisor union has been proven over the years. You don't have to go far up north to see a superintendent that each one of his schools has a separate teachers' contract. I mean, we have a lot of unification already. So I don't think the gains outweigh what we're giving up if we do this. Again, that's, that's my personal view. As far as not getting out, there, there is a lot of conversation and I put that in the flyer that once you're in, you're in. It was asked at a couple of the Act 46 study committee meetings, how do you get out of this thing? No one can answer that question. In, in statute, you can get out by doing what we're doing now, by having yourself voted out. You could do that. But again, there's a definite lack of trust as to what is going to be allowed by the agency and what's going to be allowed by the state board because they keep changing. and what's going to be allowed by the state board because they keep changing their thought process. What we're proposing today, a year ago, back way back last December, the Secretary of Education came to the State House on the floor because she wanted to address all the legislators. So all 180 of us were in the room. And she explained what Act 46 did and didn't do. I raised my hand and said, "Secretary, I got a question." I laid out Vernon's situation. She said, "Your best course of action would be become your own alternative separate district." Okay. Now, the State House was full. We all heard it. Now, when you talk to them, they're saying, "Well, maybe that's not quite the case." That is part of the problem. That is part of why people don't believe, once you're in, you can get out. So, you know, yes?
So at the last meeting, there was talk of having a pros and cons list available? Do we have that for this meeting? Because I would really love to see that at this point.
I tried to tell that, but quite honestly, I mean, I may be aligned with my opinion, but I could not come up with a lot of pros. And what I have for pros are what the superintendent spoke about at the last meeting, which was the $300,000 savings because we consolidated special ed. It's already been done. And the $100,000, if you read the intro to the articles, it talks about those savings. Those are not savings that are unique because we're merging or because we had merged. Those are savings that could take place anyway. And the other one was the school-based leadership councils. And again, I think the best council is here. So for pros, I don't see an overwhelming number of pros. I think there's a lot more risk than are pros.
Let me just, as a quick follow-up to that. All of the equipment we see outside in the unified school district, would that be falling directly on the capital fund for the school? Or would that be part of a building maintenance plan that would be shared by the entire district?
Currently, it would be the capital fund. I can't say what would happen a few years down the road, how the votes would go, because it would no longer be the Vernon Elementary School budget. It would be the unified district budget, and resources would be allocated according to their board. So I can't answer that question. I don't know what that future board would do. Yes?
I would like to inquire, is it even a possibility that we could contract those services? I mean, we keep talking about it, but is it a possibility within the new unified district?
I think what Mike had said earlier is, yeah, there would be an interest on the part of Vernon and also the supervisory district. So it would be up to the state board to ultimately decide what that makes...
So you guys are on board with us?
Yeah. I mean, Frank had put together a financial projection of what contracting would cost. It's, you know, a two-cent increase in your tax rate. A negative without the merger is you lose the 10-cent benefit. It's eight cents, but, you know, you add another two cents, and you lose that. So to answer your question simply, yes, there is an interest on both parties to do that. There are some other benefits that, you know, we've identified in this Study Committee report that, you know, is real. And that's what's pushing the other boards to say, "It makes sense in terms of programmatic opportunities for our students to do this." So your board has weighed the decision of school choice versus some of those program opportunities. And it's, there's a lot of detail in there, but that's the simplest way I can say it.
Can I just follow it up with, I mean, what is the likelihood that we will lose our teaching staff that is in charge now if we do...
I think the only impact is how your tax rates may be affected two or three years out and how it impacts your decision, your budget development decisions. And I think at that point, I mean, I see down the road, in two or three years, this board might want to come back to the SD and say, "Look, it's financially not feasible to continue as an independent district if they choose to do that." Or if they align with another SU, maybe that's fine. There, you know, there is the opportunity to join the merged district, just as there is the statute that allows you to exit a district, what you're actually using in August.
So Ron, while you're standing, can you speak to Marissa's question about if we were to become part of, how could we get out of unified district?
What I just said. This current statute that is in place, that districts can use to exit a district. And it requires a vote of the town, a favorable vote, and then a favorable vote of the other districts that you're part of.
Okay.
So it's the same process.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not a, once you're in, you can't get out?
No, I don't believe that.
Then why is it being advertised that way?
I don't know.
It's being advertised that way to everybody who's...
I was at some of the Act 46 meetings. And there was a lot of things that were said that, for instance, this board was asked to join the Act 46 committee to investigate all the possibilities. So hearing that, the board voted four to one to join. Come March, one of our board members who was a committee was sent to the committee by this board. He no longer ran. He was not part of this board any longer. And we wanted to replace him, and we were told, "You can't replace him." And we said, "What do you mean, we can't replace him?" He said, "This is our board. He's our representative of our board." And that committee said, "No, you can't replace him." And then it just... And it's like, well, who gave you the authority to say who we're sending from our board to be represented here? And if we joined, the vote would have... If we didn't do something to stop the process, we would already be in this. The vote was coming in June. We had to slow it down so we could find other alternatives. Otherwise, we were told, just like we were told, we couldn't change that person, that we were going to be in this whole thing, and we didn't have any say in it. So we had to do something to slow the process down. By voting us out, we're slowing the process down to November because everything's going to change in November. But if we're in the unified district, we cannot get out of the unified district. And that's exactly what we were told repeatedly at these committees, is that we could not get out of that district, just like we couldn't get off the Act 46 committee. There are so many things that were said. In one committee meeting, the topic of Vernon's school choice did come up. And somewhere in the articles, the article was changed from one week to the next, that Vernon could have 10 years' worth of school choice. I don't know where that came from, but it came up in that committee meeting that time from the week before, that we would have 10 years of school choice. One of the committee members on that committee from Guilford said, "Well, I don't think it's fair that Guilford have it for 10 years." Somebody from Putney, Vernon have it for 10 years. Somebody from Putney said, "Well, I agree with you. We think they shouldn't have it for 10 years." The member from Guilford then said, "Well, we'll give Vernon four years." And they said, "Okay, let's vote." They all voted, and we were down to four years' worth of maybe having school choice. It happened that fast without any input from Vernon whatsoever. I cannot put any faith whatsoever into a committee that I see, and I saw for many meetings, rule like that. And I was in the, I was not a voting member, therefore, I was in the audience. And I didn't have the opportunity to raise my hand and ask a question when the question came up. I was told, "You have three minutes at the end of a two-hour meeting." And I don't know about you, but I can't hold all my thoughts for two hours about every question that I have there. And I was not allowed to speak. And I just came back to the board and said, "We need to slow the process down. Everything could change come November. But if we're in that committee and we're on that track, we're there." So all we're asking is, "Do you want us to slow, keep, slow us down?" We would already be in if we didn't say anything. We would be in this district. This would be the last, actually, as of July 1st this year, I think. Could be next year. The whole board would be gone. The board would be gone. The school would be gone. Everything would be gone. So we chose as a board to slow it down, seeing some of the processes that took place. And are there tons of questions that are unanswered? Yes. And a lot of things are changing in November because the legislature will change. Everything will change. So how do we go forward with so many unanswered questions in that direction? So all we're saying is, "Slow us down. This gave us the opportunity to step back. We have time to research. We have time to wait till November."
A member from Dummerston asked several times, "How do you get out? Once you're in this marriage, how do you get out?" And she never got really, got an answer that you could do that. But while the statute provides an opportunity to do that, it's intentionally difficult to get out. There is concern that that may change, and there could be legislation that doesn't allow you out once you're in. There is opportunity to get out of all the other towns' votes are out. That does exist. But think about this. That's been on the books for a long time. We will be the first town ever to do it. And that's what has flummoxed the agency. They don't know how to deal with that. It's never happened before. And that's why they're not sure what they're going to do with us because no one's ever done this. Because it's extremely difficult to withdraw from a district. And Act 46 and the driving force behind it is going to make it more difficult. And at some point, withdrawal, I don't think, will be possible.
Was this, um, Act 46, was this started by the Department of Education or the legislature? Who was the... Because the Department of Education doesn't answer to anybody, right? They're an entity unto themselves?
Actually, it's no longer a department. It's now an agency. So the secretary's a cabinet post. The only person the Secretary of Ed is responsible to is the governor. So if you look at an agenda and how it's transpiring, that's why those of us on the board have said, "November's going to change a lot because you're going to have a new governor." A lot of this is driven by administrative decision, administrative priorities, and administrative agenda. That's what's driving this. So when you get a new governor, you're going to have secretaries changing all over the place. And we may take a different direction. As I said, one of the candidates wants to get rid of 46 entirely. And it runs the whole game, from one saying, "Oh, I really support it," to one saying, "No," and anything in between. So in November, it's going to change. Is it the agency or the legislature driving it? It's kind of an odd duck. But if you go to Montpelier and you hang out there, what you find out is that somebody has an agenda. They get an agency to start pushing that agenda. That agency starts pushing a committee chair. And that's why, if you remember earlier, I said there were a dozen bills on the wall that would have addressed all the issues that had been raised about Act 46. They could have all been addressed last year. And many of the questions we're asking, many of the concerns we have, could have been resolved. The one thing that, well, I was on seven bills. But one of the bills I was on was that one that I'm going to resubmit about one town being side by side. Another was the number of 900 students. Stowe does not have 900 students. They do everything that you need to do in Act 46. They have outstanding testing results. They do it rather inexpensively. And they're not going to be allowed to keep their district. You're going to have to join with the district next door, who is the polar opposite. And they want to see that 900 number lowered. So there are a lot of things that could change, and a lot of circumstances that could change. So, you know, as to who's driving it, it's an administrative agenda. And if you think about, who was the father of Act 60? Who's the governor? This is a continuation of Act 60. Less and less local control. We're moving away more towards a centralized government. That's my view. Again, I'm not representing a board with that statement. That's my opinion. But if you remember years ago when we were fighting against Act 60, people like myself, Laura Juvencentes, Patty O'Donnell, and a bunch of others, we were all saying, "The inevitable is you're going to lose your schools because you're marching that way." And Act 60 was the first step. And it's the same person that's driving the agenda. Yes?
First of all, I appreciate you allowing me to ask a question. For those who don't know, I'm the principal here in Vernon. And so when I think about this, you know, these things, what I'm thinking about is, you know, what's going to be the impact on our students, our students who are here in this school? Not that all of those other students are not very important. They are. But I know and really care about the ones who I know here. And also our staff, because I know that when our staff is supported and happy, that they can do an excellent job for our students. So I appreciate you letting me ask a question today. One of the things you talked about, and I just want to get clarity on it because I'm confused, is, so if Vernon voted to leave the supervisor union, then, and that, and then all the towns voted, "Yep, that's okay. You guys can leave the supervisory union." And the board, is it the Board of Education, maybe? Who can say, "Well, you can't join with SESU. You need to join with a like school." So like, we would end up joining with Wyndham Central. So we've got all this curriculum and programs we've been working on, but now we have to sort of shift gears? You know, that's my question. Do we continue on the path we're going on, which we believe is the right program for our students? Or would we be beholden to now this new group that the Board of Education has said, "We are like, and therefore need to join"?
Part of the problem is, we're like no one else. That is, we are unique. The closest likeness we have are the towns I mentioned earlier, the Dovers and Jamaicas, places like that. We would not be joining with Wyndham Central because we're not like Wyndham Central. What would happen would be, you would have to have your towns that are like towns to ours, those towns with school choice, those towns that want to have their own building, those towns that want to keep their school board. Those would be the like towns. They would form a new district.
So they could be like anywhere in the state?
There's no necessity to be contiguous. So, yeah, I would think that it would primarily be towns in Wyndham County, but certainly, it would not be the town next door. Again, as I said, if Guilford were to say, "We want school choice for the high school and middle school," we could be a like town with Guilford and be side by side to the unified district. We're trying to do, because we share what you stated earlier. We share your views of our staffs and students and their concerns and what we'd like to see happen with our staff and students. We want the best things to happen for our school, our staff, and our students. And at this point in time, we think the best thing is to proceed cautiously, to extract ourselves from the union district so that it gives us time to explore our options, to find out what would happen from the Agency of Ed, what would happen from the Board of Ed, and what their decision would be. Once they've rendered a decision, we can gather back like this again and say, "Okay, folks, we are the school-based leadership council. Right here in this room. That's what we are. We're what's described in Article 15, only we're elected and you elected us. Okay? What do you want to do now? These are the known conditions. We're not going to be allowed to be in that district. Do we want to strike off another district? Or is it the desire of the town to now merge? By doing this, we really don't lose much. Okay? You get conversation about the tax incentives. If you remember a couple of years ago at Montpelier, I got to say, tax ramp down from the plant closure. Okay, we were supposed to go to 100% taxation immediately upon closure of the plant. It's going, it's being phased out over time. I have asked on numerous occasions, whether it's joint fiscal services, whether it's Brad James, the fiscal guy for the agency, what happens to our tax break from Yankee? Nobody knows. Do we lose it because we're getting... Do we lose it because we're getting the ramp off that you have the incentive money? Nobody knows, they won't answer the question. They're not answering it, makes me suspect as to what's going to happen. The other thing is, at this point, the ten cents incentive is gone. That was if you did the accelerate. Now we're at the eight six, eight six four two, okay? If you look at that amount of money, it's not, it's not a tremendous amount of money for Vernon. But the thing that you really have to look at is, if we did that this year, got the eight cents, that would be a hundred and six thousand dollars to Vernon, all right? The only catch is, it comes out of the Ed fund, okay? Does everyone remember four years ago when we didn't put twenty-seven million dollars into the Ed fund? What happened? Everybody's local share went up. So everyone that gets this incentive, everybody else is going to pay for it, including the people that get the incentive. So the eight cents is an eight cents. It's coming out of the Ed fund. Now, they were anticipating a certain amount, it's far beyond, this year was more than they anticipated. Next year, anticipating a hit of over seven million dollars in the Ed fund because of the incentives. So when you, when you look at that, it's not much different than the ramp off that we're getting with the Yankee stuff. This is going to be gone in a few years, then you'll be at your full tax rate. And what are you giving up? And I, not good enough to do math with my head, but it's about, over a four-year period, about three hundred thousand dollars. Okay, out of about eighteen million dollars in budget. It's not a lot of savings to give up what we're being asked to give up. Also, Brad James, the financial officer for the agency, has said, this is not a tax break. This is transition money, it's to allow monies for all this stuff to take place. There are members of the committee who have said publicly, they're very sorry that they put these incentives on the table because it took the focus off of what it should have been. The focus came off the students and it went to the taxes. And if you think about it, and you think about what's been written in the paper, and you think about what our neighbor over in Guilford wrote about these tax incentives and stuff, it was all about, look at how much money we can save, look at the money we can save, look at what we can do. I never heard anybody saying, well, gee, is it worth the change that we're going to go through for this pittance of money? There's not a lot of money here. And once, once we've gone through that incentive money, we're going to be taxed at one common rate with the rest of the unified district. And then they have to address the problem with CLA, there are a lot of problems with this. So, you know, while, while a lot of people think this is a good thing, I think we're risking an awful lot if we don't withdraw and take our time. I mean, we can always join. This is our one opportunity to delay and see what actually happens to Vernon. The lady back there will start.
I'm just going to ask a question to clarify on a couple of things that have already been mentioned. Busing, insurance costs for staff. Have, and maybe Ron could answer this, or maybe financially over there, they have the figures. Have you asked under contract what those, you say that you hope to work with them, but because we're not part of them, most likely I can't see that we get the exact same rate that we are getting now. And secondly, the other question I was hoping to clarify, I heard Dana and a teacher ask about curriculum. If you were to merge with Dover, who may use a whole different curriculum, I, what I'm hearing them ask is, if that were to happen, would we, Vernon, have to purchase new curriculum to join them? Also retrain the teachers, not that they couldn't jump in and do that, but basically learn their style? So those are my two questions, have we, have we asked what those figures you think like?
Actually, the analysis was done by Central Office. Mr. Rucker did that and found that the difference would be negligible, it wouldn't be a tremendous amount of money difference. So that was not a big impact. To the question of curriculum, we have changed curriculum here, I've been on this board for a couple of years. Right? And I've seen a lot of things transpire here. We had reading recovery, which we invested a ton of money in. One year we spent three hundred thousand dollars to send people away for special training and everything. We came in, a year and a half later said, man, this really does not work, we tossed it. We did another reading program, we tossed that. Now we're going to another math program. Curriculum is an, curriculum is an evolutionary thing, it changes. It changes all the time. So the curriculum we have right now, while we all think it might be great, two, three years from now, we said, boy, you know what? Our, our numbers aren't going up, our test results aren't getting better, we've got to look at another curriculum. Curriculum does change. And if you look at changes in curriculum, this is more personal. I have a granddaughter that was going to school in Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union, doing poorly. Was on an IEP, went to Dover. Off the IEP, their curriculum was different. Off the IEP is now an honor student at the high school. Kids fit better in certain schools. Now, was it the curriculum or was that school a better fit? That's the school choice issue. Was it a better fit for that child? That's what I look at. There are kids in this town, in all the years I've been on the board, we've authorized kids to go a lot of different places. We've had kids that were going to drop out of school, but were able to go to the plumbing program down at the tech center, and now they're a licensed plumber rather than drop out of school. Twenty percent of kids that go to any school, and they pick a school, I'm not, you know, Bradenboro's a decent comprehensive high school, you do a good job, most of the kids, great. Do they do a good job for everybody? No, no one can make that claim. Mount Hermon, great school, good school, whatever, high quality school. Does every kid fit in Mount Hermon? No, about twenty percent of those kids would do better somewhere else. That's what we're asking, to allow our parents to make the decisions for their children's education. What's in the best interest of that child? Now, I've had kids that have gone to Pioneer, I've had grandchildren that have gone to Pioneer, I've had grandchildren go to Bradenboro. Each one is unique and different, the situation fits them or it doesn't fit them. It's up to the student, and we should allow, we've had this tradition long before BUHS number six existed. We've had the tradition of our students going to choice, taking choice, they didn't call it school choice then, they just went to other schools. We've had that tradition long before BUHS number six was in existence. That's what we're asking, maintain that tradition for as long as we possibly can. Let's test it, let's withdraw, move forward. And if it is not working indeed, come back and say. I'm not so wedded to this that I would say, oh, you know, we got to do this for. Personally, my kids, they're out of school. I don't use school choice. My grandchildren are in towns without school choice now. So to me personally, it's irrelevant. But what it is, is what I've seen in almost thirty years on a school board, the benefit to the students that I have seen that have been able to make choices that were of their best interest. We've had kids that have gone to other schools and then gone to Bradenboro and done well. They went to the other school thinking, hey, my brother went there, I think it's great. Got there, went, oh, this thing's so good, and went to Bradenboro. But they had the freedom to do it. And that's what we're asking, allow us to continue that until we've researched every alternative and gotten every answer. And if we find out that this is not the best course of action for the town of Vernon, for our students, we come back, do the same exact thing, say, okay, folks, do you want to vote to go there? And that's what we would be asking. But we want the time to do that.
I'd just like to say something about the curriculum and the programming. And I know that the school has invested in a new reading program and a new math program. And I don't see any reason why they should feel threatened by this change. I know that we, I, I've just been on the board a short amount of time, but I saw that we were definitely going to support some kind of people to come in to, to help implement the programs. And most of the teachers here are experienced, I'm sure that with, it's not ideal, it would be nice to have the grade level meetings. We were assured we would help, we would still be able to have those until a few weeks ago. Hopefully that will come back as an option and, and you'll still have that kind of support. But I don't see why we would have to give up those programs. I just, I just believe Vernon could get the support the teachers need to implement them since we have purchased them. And if Dover, if we ended up having to align with other schools, it doesn't mean we have to change our, our programming. If we have a program that works, they may want to look at what we're doing. It doesn't mean that we have to have a different one. Bradenboro schools didn't all have the same program. When I was teaching at Old Grove, we had a different program than Academy had and Green Street School had. They felt it was working well evidently, so now they're, they're looking at purchasing it or purchasing it. But it doesn't mean you're limited. Another thing that I just wanted to say is, Gina mentioned the unknowns about the benefits and all of that. And I, I have to say that the reason I became so concerned about this whole, this whole thing was all the unknowns. It just seems so crazy to be joining or forming, being a part of a district, a unified district, when it's so, I've, I've only been involved in three months maybe, and things have changed. We keep being told it's one way, and then the next week it's another, no, that doesn't work, that isn't going to be the way it is. I don't see how you can make decisions with that kind of shaky ground that you're making them on. And, and like Deb and Mike have said, you know, if we can, if we can take the time, the whole thing may change back to more of what we have been, which has worked well, or it may not, and we may have to look at options. But it just feels like we can't just join because it would be the easier thing to do right now and give up what we have as a very special district. And we'd be giving up a lot.
So if Vernon extracts itself from the district and Montpelier in fact allows us not to join the unified district, is it truly as seamless as it sounds should two years down the road we say, we need to be a part of this district? Is there a penalty, is there a cost? We put a huge hiccup in the system by slowing it down, is there a hiccup in getting back in?
We don't anticipate that it would be, outside of the vindictive nature, there would be no reason for other people to do that. And thus far, I don't, I think there was a lot of angst when we pulled out and brought the process to a screeching halt. There were people that were not happy, there are people that are still not talking to me. But I think in the end, it's understood why we took the action we took. And I would anticipate, I would be extremely disappointed and shocked if people said, no, you can't come in because you left us before. I mean, that, you know, that, I can foresee that happening, and no one has indicated that that would happen.
Is there a possibility that the Department of Education or Montpelier could say, no, you guys are on your own? Is, is that a possibility down the road?
I don't think so because that's, their whole point is get everything merged.
It's, it's more likely that they would say to Vernon, to Vernon at some point, if, if they allow this contractual arrangement, we're all good. If they don't, at some point by 2019, they're going to say, by the way, Vernon, you're in that district. And that's it, they will make the determination. Right now, the State Board of Ed has the authority to take any district and assign it to any other district in the state. So they could do that with us. And again, it's one of the unknowns. The thing is, again, to reiterate, we're trying to buy some time to find out and answer these questions. The other thing, I guess there was a meeting earlier with, with the superintendent and some of the staff members. It would have been nice if the board had been there to try and answer some questions. But for our staff members, if you do have concerns and questions, come to the board, ask us. I mean, we've always been very frank and honest with our staff, we, we like our staff. We get along very well with them, I think we've always, on both sides, we, we try very hard to do what's in the best interest of all parties involved. There's never been animosity between the staff and the board. And I don't see any reason to do that now. So if you have concerns or questions, please come to the board and express them to us, and we will try and get you the answers that we can. Just as on the July eleventh meeting, folks asked questions, we tried to bring back whatever answers we could find. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we don't know a lot of the answers. And again, that's why we're trying to withdraw, to give us the time to answer those questions. Because quite honestly, if the superintendent and the board is correct, and the agency says, go ahead with that contractual arrangement, Vernon stays as it is, and we keep our school choice, and we get what we desire. But we don't get that if we at least don't make the effort. And I think that's what the knife is about. Do we want to make the effort to try and keep Vernon intact the way it is today, or not? If we decide not to make that effort, then we're done. But if we decide to make that effort, we appeal to the Agency of Education, and we continue to work with the Supervisor Union or the unified district to create the best situation for everyone. Two more questions.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yours doesn't count, two more besides yours.
It's been my understanding, and, and again, things have changed now and then, so I'm not sure if it's still true. But is it true that if we had a, if we were part of the unified board district, and there was a board, that Vernon teachers, say, another school was really struggling and their test scores weren't very high, and could they take a teacher, teachers from Vernon and move them around in the same way that they're able to do that in Bradenboro Town? Not that they do it often, but they can. Would they have the authority to take staff from Vernon and move them to other schools?
Yes, actually, in the Articles of Agreement, they can assign teachers, they can assign administration, maintenance people. They, they talk about, the Articles of Agreement addresses like, if you have, say we had a licensed electrician here, you could save some money if the licensed electrician could go to Bradenboro and fix something. So they could, they could do that. They could assign people to different places.
Why is that not so?
Yeah, that, that is not the intent of the shared staffing. Just as we consolidated special ed, it wasn't like we took special ed teachers from one school and placed them in another school. It's really just if a school doesn't have the capacity for students or the budget impact for a full-time position, and it could be a half-time position, it can be shared with a neighboring school. That's what that's about, to be cost effective.
And I think, you know, today that is the intention, but it is intent. And we don't know what a board five years down the road is going to intend to do. Yes, ma'am?
But quick, Matt, then if we end up being forced to join like Dover or whatever, that then it could then be that, you know, like, oh, we're kind of short a music teacher there, we'll send you over there instead? I mean, that could be a possibility down the road if we are forced to join.
Well, we would, we would be as we are now, we would be a Vernon old school district or whatever we would call it at that point. But certainly, you can have those cooperative situations. But those would be, you would have Articles of Agreement, and those would be addressed in the Articles of Agreement. Just as for those of us that have been around, around law, Mr. Corwin, Mr. Corwin used to go from here to Guilford. We share teachers and staff with other schools within the Supervisor Union, we've done that before. Is it a bad idea? No, it's not a bad idea. I mean, if you each have a full-time teacher and all you actually need is one full-time for two places, then you should be able to do that. And again, Act forty-six doesn't create that situation, we have that already, we could do that now if we chose.
Right, I guess my concern is just if you were to join with a like district that's very far away, you know, it could be a little tricky to, you know, be here and then have to go all the way up to Dover or to make that.
Exactly, and I think the board, in a Articles of Agreement, would take those things into consideration. Historically, we've always tried to do all we can to assist our staff, and I don't think we'd do something like that, that would be pretty onerous. That would be pretty onerous to do that. Now, you know, sharing with Guilford, that's pretty easy, but I mean, you know, if you're going to Dover, that's, that's a trek. That, that's not going to work. It's not practical. It's just not a practical solution.
Thank you. I think, I, I don't live in Vernon, so thank you for letting me speak again, but I am a teacher here. For me, it seems like the literature that I've read in Act 46 has also implied that by 2020 consolidation is going to happen anyway regardless. And I know that there are many unknowns. For me, as a teacher here, the benefits that we receive from the district, professional development, services for our students, occupational therapy, physical therapy, ESL, all of those services that are in the district, I would not choose to send my child to a district where those services were put at risk for just being a one school. There are unknowns, I think, in joining the, the WSUSD, but I think there are also unknowns in removing ourselves. I don't think that, I anticipate that there will be penalties from removing ourselves now, Vernon now, and joining in another couple of years. I just, I don't think that there's such a thing as a free lunch. And again, in all of the, the literature that I've read on Act 46, it does seem like consolidation is something that is going to come down the line regardless for the benefit of our students and our staff. And, and I think because of that, because of all the layers of analyzing standardized testing and using resources from the Central Office to help teachers become better at their profession, I think for me, it seems much more risky to not join. But that's just my perspective as a teacher and not a Vernon resident.
I appreciate that, but I, I can tell you, from sitting in the legislature currently, there is a great desire for change to Act 46, and the literature about Act 46 is just strewn with incorrect information. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of unknowns, again. People that were on the committee, and I shared in the debate, I testified before the committee, those folks today are saying, "Wow, we have to change this. There's a lot of bad stuff here. We need to change this." And again, all we're asking folks here to do is give us the opportunity to pursue this path, and if it's not working, we'll make the best choice as a town. Together, we will make the best choice. Right now, I think it's the most prudent thing to be out of the High School Union, ask the Agency, and I'm basing that on the cooperative relationship we've had with our partners in the WSASU, and that cooperative attitude has continued. So I'm not thinking that, okay, on August 10th, Mr. Sizer is going to say, "Damn, you guys all voted yourselves out. I don't like you anymore." That's not going to happen. We have had a cooperative relationship. We will continue to cooperate, and we will put together a proposal to present to the Agency of Education to say, "This is what we believe is in the best interest of the Vernon Elementary School District, and with the cooperation of the New Unified District, we can provide all of these services to our students, and our staff can maintain what they have now and put that plan forward, and let them decide what they're going to do with the plan." If they reject the plan, we can then come back and say, "Okay, they've rejected the plan. What is it we want to do now?" But if we vote to stay in, in that High School Union on the 9th, there's no more opportunity. We're, we're there. So just think about, you know, do we want the opportunity to see what the future actually holds and how we can adjust to it, or do we just want to close the door? Last question, Seth.
I'm wondering the Agency of Education's rule on whether or not we could contract. I mean, would it take place between the August 9th vote and the November vote? So that November vote?
No, it couldn't until, there has to be an approved plan. They have to vote to have their Articles of Agreement approved first. So that would have to take place. And then we say, "Okay, they, they now have the Unified District. We want to contract the Unified District. Can we do that?" And again, it'll be after November, so there'll be some turmoil in the state agencies anyway because they're all going to have new leadership. So. Okay, good. Larry and this gentleman, and because we wanted to wind up by 8 o'clock, and we're getting close to that time.
This is not our question, okay?
Okay.
This is my opinion. My lifetime, I've seen the federal government, state government, come, just get in and keep taking control, control, control. We can't make any decisions locally anymore. And I'm sick of it. How's that feel?
That's good.
I agree. Yes, sir.
I know this isn't your view, but other people have said that if we were to not withdraw ourselves from BHU and become part of this Unified District, that we could subsequently remove ourselves from the district. But if we were to join the District, U as a board would cease to exist, so who would make the decision to remove ourselves from the district? Who would be analyzing that decision if it's something we wanted to make?
It would have to be voted each town that belongs to the district each town would have to vote to allow us out.
But who would initiate that if there wasn't a board in Vernon, to Vernon?
The representative to the Unified Board. But it would be, it would be extremely difficult to do. And if we do join, school choice is gone. So if you vote, if you vote to stay on the 9th, school choice is gone, and school ownership is gone, and you will not be electing your board. Everyone, thank you very much for attending. I hope you all get to the polls on the 9th.